Welcome, everyone. Thank you so much for being here tonight. We know that you all have a lot of choices on things you could do with your time. So we thank you for coming here and spending your, especially a day off from school, spending your day, or your evening here with us. It seems like everywhere you turn, there are stories in the media about vaping. Just today, I read an article with the following information and statistics. In the late eighties, studies estimated that forty percent of youth smoked cigarettes. Through a concerted effort to educate youth, that number had dropped to a low of seven percent in two thousand seventeen, which is amazing. About that time, the e-cigarette industry company Juul was developed and brought out, bought out, or bought into by Marlboro. In the three years since, the e-cigarette industry has exploded. Research now shows that twenty-five to thirty percent of high school students are vaping. The article that I read goes on to say, and I quote, "So in the course of three years, through clever product design, social media marketing, and positioning itself in the center of the millennial culture, Juul was able to capture the youth demographic that big tobacco had lost over the last couple of years. As a result, thirty years of good, good work disappeared in a figurative blink of an eye, and now educators have a new problem on their hands." End quote. It is a problem that we are seeing firsthand with our own students and in our schools. We are also hearing of the numbers that the CDC continues to report on the increasing number of youths getting sick and even dying from vaping. To begin to address this problem as a district, we have provided information to students and families, we have provided training to staff, we've made changes to our policies to include vaping language, and we have begun to discuss vaping in our current health curriculum review. In addition, we want to offer this town hall as a way for students and parents and the school to come together and talk about this topic. There are many unknowns with vaping, but our hope for tonight is to provide you with some information that we do know about teens and vaping, and to give you a time to ask questions. We also hope that we begin a conversation that goes beyond the doors, beyond these doors. We are fortunate to have a great lineup of speakers tonight, and our first speaker is Dr. Anthony Herricks. Dr. Herricks is a pulmonologist at Avera. He is board certified in internal medicine, pulmonary medicine, critical medicine, and sleep medicine. He is the Chair of the Department of Medicine and Director of Critical Care at Avera McKinnon. I think we're in good hands. Dr. Herricks is a parent himself and has three children ages ten, thirteen, and sixteen. Please join me in welcoming Dr. Herricks.
Good evening. Thanks for taking time out of your day to come visit with me. So, they asked me to present a little bit of information about vaping. So I'm gonna try to touch on the basics. I'm sure a lot of you have heard about it, a lot of you know about it. Some of this may be old information, some of this may be new, so I'll try not to bore you, but it's a very, very important topic. The reason why that is, is in the nineteen hundreds in Europe, they were rolling cigarettes and smoking tobacco out of pipes. Indeed, sorry, in the nineteenth century. In the twentieth century, we started finding out that tobacco actually caused harm, lung cancer, COPD, and a lot of other problems. So look at the delay in time that it took us to get to that point. And now we have a new product on the market that's only been available in the U.S. since about two thousand six, if I remember correctly. And we now have a product that's being rapidly used by not only adults but children. And we're all six feet tall, six feet tall and bulletproof right now, but when I turn seventy and eighty and I die of my heart attack or stroke because of all the donuts and chuppers of the age and the lack of exercise that I did, so we don't realize those effects now. The other thing that we're really finding out about vaping is there are things that are happening now that can actually be dangerous to not only us, but potentially to others around us. And I know this is directed to everyone, but speaking to the children alone, we have a vape upon life ahead of you, so making sure that we make good choices now, or maybe get you to that seventy and eighty years old, so you can act as you would act like I'm going to, hopefully. So, here's the... So, this is a slide on just tobacco smoking. And the reason why I put this out is going back to the nineteenth century, the twentieth century, and now today. Tobacco is the number one preventable key word, or preventable cause of disease in the United States. There's over four hundred and eighty thousand deaths related to tobacco every year. It's the leading cause of lung cancer and the leading cause of COPD, which is a very debilitating disease where people cannot breathe as they get older, they need oxygen and inhalers. And a lot of them tell me, "Well, I quit smoking twenty or thirty years ago, but the damage has already been done." If you look at lung cancer, it is the number one leading cause of cancer deaths related in the United States. If you take breast, colon, and prostate, you add them all together, there are still more deaths from lung cancer related to smoking, as the majority of cancer-related deaths from the lung are smoking-related. Lastly, there's about sixteen to twenty-four million Americans affected with COPD. It's the fourth-leading cause of death in the United States between heart disease, lung cancer, which lung cancer fits into, and unintentional injuries. So you can see, what we don't know in the past can really hurt us in the future. So, the electronic cigarettes, they're invented in Hong Kong in around two thousand three, based on my research. What they thought would happen is this would be a cleaner delivery system of nicotine without the harms to side effects. They became commercially available in the United States around two thousand six, came in various shapes and sizes, various colors. They're called e-cigarettes, vapes, e-hukas, vape pens, electronic nicotine delivery system or Ns. And currently, they are not FDA-approved as a smoking cessation device. So the P there is not approved. It doesn't mean that maybe they wouldn't be helpful, and it doesn't mean that they potentially have helped somebody, but we don't know enough about them that we know that they can be safely used. In general, what the FDA's statement is, is it may help adults, not kids, non-pregnant, current smokers. So if you haven't been smoking, you should probably use a vape device to try to start smoking or to quit smoking, because it'll just cause more problems for you. And it is only beneficial, at least in the studies, if it is a complete substitute for smoking itself, as some of the small case series and studies have shown. So here's the types of e-cigarettes, and I know probably some of you see them, there's some sitting up there, some out there. What you can see is they comes in all different shapes and sizes. If you look up here, some of them look just like cigarettes. Some of them have a red tip on the end that looks like you're actually smoking, give off the vapor, just like smoke, so people don't know that you're using a vape device. Some of the refill cartridges that we see over in the top left-hand corner actually look like the USB port that you would plug in for your computer mouse, and they just fit in the end of a vape pen and deliver the nicotine from that direction. Some look like pipes, some look like the e-hukas with the big receptacle container, and some have various pretty colors, the pinks and blues, and maybe look like a ballpoint pen. And so they come in all different shapes and sizes. This is the basic makeup of a e-cigarette, as you can see on the top here. This is the mouthpiece where the vape liquid comes out. Right below that is usually a chamber at which the liquid is held, and then there's an atomizer that warms and creates the vapor for the liquid, little button to activate it, and at the very end, there's a battery. The crazy thing is, is we're talking about the nicotine and other substances that you can put in these e-cigarettes. But these devices have also blown up in people's faces, injured hands, mouths, eyes, faces because of their electronic device that have been known to explode at times. So, this is some of the stuff you may or may not know. This is some you may hear and say, "Well, what's the difference between an e-cigarette and a cigarette?" Well, if you look, in general, they can be cheaper. Now, this is just random numbers that I pulled off the internet, so some people could come in and tell me you're completely wrong, but based on just a broad estimation of what I can find, you can buy a starter kit with an e-cigarette, some nicotine-based liquid with different flavors, chargers, whatever else you need for anywhere between thirty and forty dollars. And then you can buy a four-pack of the pods, as they call them, that you replace for anywhere between two and four dollars apiece. So if you look at that, a pack of cigarettes costs anywhere between seven and nineteen dollars, depending on where you buy them, what the taxes on them are, and what kind you get. So, in the end, after you get your vape pen, this can be a lot cheaper substitute. So how do you compare them in strength? Well, there's not really a good number that I can give you, but one pod is about five percent nicotine. That's actually pure nicotine, just put into whatever the pod or the bottle is, and that's can be up to a hundred milligrams. The Juul pods we're talking about, somewhere around forty to fifty milligrams of nicotine in those. If you do the math, that's about a hundred and fifty to three hundred inhalations off of an e-cigarette you can get per pod, depending on the volume that you actually use. And that's about one to one and a half packs of cigarettes a day, which is about twenty to thirty cigarettes. If you go back to the cigarette and you say, "Well, how much nicotine is in a cigarette?" Depending on who you look at, depending on what you, what data you look at, a lot of the tobacco companies will tell you there's about ten to twelve milligrams of nicotine. But I think I found one study where the CDC or FDA looked, and some of those cigarettes actually have closer to nineteen milligrams of nicotine in them. The other crazy thing is, is one gentleman did a study where he actually said, "Okay, maybe there's a cigarette with nineteen milligrams of nicotine in it." But when you actually inhale that, you let it burn, the nicotine evaporates, you're maybe only getting two milligrams of nicotine per cigarette that you smoke. So if you look at the amount of nicotine you can get from one device versus another, it may be more or it may be less, depending on the day. Again, one pod may equal one pack of cigarettes, which is about four dollars, and one pack of cigarettes equals about seven dollars. The toxic lethal dose in a child is about one milligram per kilogram. If you take a four-year-old child, they're about forty pounds. That's about eighteen to twenty kilograms. If you do the math, it only takes about, say, you know, twenty milligrams of nicotine to kill a child. That's as much as one very potent cigarette. And there are actually case series out there where children have gotten the e-liquid, tastes like bubble gum, cotton candy, they've ingested it, and they went into severe cerebral edema, brain swells, they try to take off part of the scalp to save the brain from swelling, and the child dies. So very, very potent stuff that you're dealing with. And the toxic lethal dose in adult is about thirty to sixty milligrams. That's why my father once told me that if I wanted to smoke, let's go smoke a pack of cigarettes, because what he wanted me to do, because he smoked when he was younger, was to smoke the whole pack, because he knew exactly what was gonna happen. I was gonna get horribly ill, nausea, vomiting, probably cough my lungs out for days. So, I can't tolerate twenty or thirty to sixty milligrams of nicotine, but those who build up a tolerance over time may be able to. What's the social exposure? Well, we know, or I know, from growing up, and a lot of us in here do, that when you saw a cigarette smoke, you saw the smoke, you see the smell, you sometimes drive by a car where you see the windows have this haze over the top of them, it's in your clothes, it's in everything. The benefit theoretically of a vapor is it just evaporates. So the difference is, is you put mac and cheese on your stove, and you put a pot of boiling water on your stove. If you let the mac and cheese bubble and boil, guess what? You get burning and smell, and you get all kinds of stuff. If you let the water boil, as long as you don't let the pan go dry, you may never smell anything. So there's no lingering smell associated with it. With all the flavors that you have, it can be a very pleasant smell, you know, and I'll tell you some of the, show you some of the flavors that I found earlier. And so that also leads to a little bit of the addiction. Lots of flavors, there's no tar residue, you don't need to have cigarette lighters, you don't need to have ashtrays, there's no really dirtiness about it, and it's easier to hide. And what I've been told is, and I can give you examples of, when I drive to McKinnon in the morning, you can't smoke on that campus, but you can smoke right across the street. So if you want a cigarette, you have to leave the campus, go smoke your cigarette, they're expensive. So what do you do? You sit there and you smoke the whole cigarette before you go back from your break. With an e-cigarette, you can put that in your sleeve, in your pocket, in your hand, and you can hide it, and you can inhale it, and then blow the vapor in your sleeve, or whatever you want to do, and nobody knows it. So if I were a smoker, and I could smoke a cigarette when I went to work in the morning, when on my ten o'clock break, when at noon, when on my afternoon break, and smoke them while I got them at home at night, I may go through a pack, pack and a half, depends on how much I want to smoke. You take an e-cigarette and you puff, and you puff, and you puff, and you puff. Before you know it, you could easily have a pack, a pack and a half, two packs of cigarettes a day. And so you don't really know or realize how much nicotine you're getting in your system and what that's doing to yourself over time. So, there's really no limitations on how much you could probably smoke. Some of the social concerns with it, may smoke more, may smoke less, depending on how you feel about it. There, again, you're not obligated to smoke the whole cigarette when you have a nicotine vape pen. You can potentially be less addictive, they thought, that maybe you didn't have the potency of a regular cigarette. Ammonia and other chemicals that are in a cigarette, there's over seven thousand of them. Seventy of them are known to cause cancer. Some of those things in the cigarette actually trigger the brain to accept more nicotine and accept more potency, and that's what contributes to some of the addiction. They got smart enough, the Juul pods and other pods that are out there actually have nicotine salts in them that also make the nicotine more potent, so it's absorbed into the system more readily, and can be more toxic, and give you more of a high. Again, they think that they're less toxic, that they're less carcinogens. Of course, I would much rather boil a pot of water on my stove than boil mac and cheese till it burns because of the smell and everything that's associated with it and the cleanup that you have. So, we think that these are less toxic, but what we're finding out is they're not potentially less toxic, because there may be some toxicity in things that we are not aware of associated with these. And there have been studies that there are still carcinogens or cancer-causing properties in some of these liquids that we take into our system. So here's the major constituents in a pod, propylene glycol. In my ICU, when I take care of patients, I have all kinds of medicines that I dilute in propylene glycol and put in through your IV to deliver drugs to your system. You can probably find it in foods that you ingest. Vegetable glycerin sounds pretty, pretty clean, put it in our bodies all the time. Problem is, we don't really know what those things do when you inhale them into the lungs with the very fine, delicate fibers that we have in there that allow oxygen to go from here under a bloodstream and keep us alive. There is benzoyl acid and other chemicals and diluents. There's nicotine, which is a major one, but you look at, there's THC, which is the drug that's in marijuana, CBD, which is cannabinoid oil, and K2 or spice, which is the synthetic marijuana can go in there. There's all kinds of flavors, and then there's been studies showing trace amounts of cancer-causing properties, and then water. Other nicotine substances that have been known to be vape include the tetrahydrocannabinol, which is THC, again, which is the chemical that lets you get high when you smoke marijuana. They have found cannabinoid oils, K2 spice, hash oils, dank vapes, other flavor drinks, and some people actually make their own home liquid to put in these pens to vaporize. These are some of the common flavors I found, there are endless. But some of them look good to me. There's peach, there's berry, pineapple, some taste like juicy fruit gum, what I've been told, cotton candy, apple pie. You can find all kinds of flavors out there, and you can imagine that if you and I went out and had never smoked, and you put a cigarette in my mouth, whether it's menthol or just regular tobacco flavored, I can't imagine that tasted well. You give me a piece of juicy fruit gum or some cotton candy, gosh, I could, I have a sweet tooth, I can't walk by the kitchen table without grabbing a handful of M&amp;M's, so you can about imagine what that would do to a guy like me. So, the flavors are obviously one of the things that they produce to say, "Let's get into the dirtiness of cigarettes and see whether we can get people hooked on this a little bit more." So positive benefits of nicotine. The FDA, the CDC are there for a reason. When we develop new drugs, every single one of them causes harm. We weigh the risks and benefits of harm versus benefit. There's enough benefit with low harm, then it usually gets marketed to the public and we use it. And maybe later down the road, we found out that it is more harmful than it is good, and it gets pulled off the market. And what we don't know is how this is gonna affect us long-term. Nicotine increases your cognitive awareness, so it makes you a little bit smarter, for lack of better terms. It makes you a little bit more vigilant during the day, it helps you with your memory, it actually reduces stress and gives you that feeling of well-being. When I ask my patients why they should quit smoking, or why they haven't quit smoking, a lot of them say, "Well, I have a lot of stress in my life." And I want to look at them and say, "You know what? I have a lot of stress in my life too, but I don't use nicotine as a replacement to do, deal with that." Now, we're all in different places, so we all have different coping mechanisms. But one of the things that they use nicotine for is it gives them that feeling of happiness, and so it takes away some of that stress that they have, it gives them that feeling of well-being. It also goes to the area that triggers the brain for the reward system. And there might be some protective effects. There are what we call nicotinic receptors in our body, and there are drugs that attach to those that cause positive effects. And nicotine may be helpful in things like dementia, Parkinson's disease, but it wasn't meant to be necessarily smoked like we do it in, in the world. Here are the negative effects of nicotine on the brain. It alerts, it alters the growth of immature brain cells. So, an interesting fact, the human brain does not become fully stable until we're about twenty-four years old. And most wives in here could say that the men's brain probably don't until they're forty, fifty, sixty, you know? So you can imagine what altering the brain does at this stage of your life when you're six feet tall and bulletproof and nothing can do you any harm. In children, that incomplete development also alters the problem or the areas of the brain that deal with decision-making, impulse control, and executive function. And so if we go into a child's brain and we alter that at this point, that may alter that indefinitely, and you may never get that back. And we're all one of these smart people, we all want to get good jobs, we all want to go somewhere in life, and if it changes how we act and how we, the person that we can be, that becomes a huge problem. And the biggest problem I think I have with this isn't necessarily the impulse control and the executive function and those kind of things, it's the risk-reward system. Because most of the things that we do, and I can tell you, I've done a lot of stupid things, in life, there's a risk-reward. And what happens is, is if the reward is great enough, we will do it. And sometimes that reward could be peer pressure from our friends, it could be making us feel better, it could be doing all of those things that we probably shouldn't be, and then we have to make that adult decision, as I call it, and sometimes I still don't make the best adult decision. So, that is one of the things that it alters, and if it alters that risk-reward system now, you can about imagine what risks we will take later in our life. It's also very highly addictive. It affects the area of the brain similar to cocaine and amphetamines. And what they call with cocaine, or what they talk about with cocaine is chasing the white rabbit. If you take, and you take a hit off of cocaine, whether you smoke it, inject it, snort it, that goes to an area of the brain that releases dopamine, and dopamine is a chemical that makes you feel good, keeps you awake, it gives you energy, it gives you that sense of well-being. It's almost like the body depletes that, and then the tank never gets filled up again. And if the tank never gets filled up again, then you never get that feeling again to use more cocaine, and use it more frequently, and use it more coke, and then you're always chasing to get that same high. Nicotine affects that same area of the brain. So then you take an immature brain and you stimulate those areas, you are constantly chasing the white rabbit to see what next high you can get. And then we think that underdeveloped brains for that reason might be more sensitive to this, and actually may result in more addictive properties. It's also habit creating. I have a patient of mine that has, comes into clinic all the time, and he's got a sucker stick in his mouth. Why does he have a sucker stick in his mouth? Because he's smoked so much in his lifetime that he has to have that oral fixation of something there. If he didn't have a sucker stick in his mouth, he'd probably have a cigarette in his mouth. So there's times a day where they say, "Well, gosh, I quit," but I wake up and I have my morning coffee and gotta read the paper, and I just crave a cigarette. I go to the bar with the buddies and I have a beer, I just crave a cigarette. So, there's time and spatial and habits that we create that have nothing to do with the nicotine whatsoever, but the nicotine, because of that risk-reward system, and the reward you get, makes you think of those happy things that you do, and then every time you do them, there's that little bit triggering the brain. It's kind of like when you think about going to Grandma's for Thanksgiving and start smelling the turkey and the pumpkin pie. The brain stores those memories there, and that can contribute to some of those behaviors. Other organs that can cause problems, nicotine may be a cancer promoter. We talk about these seventy cancer-promoting things that are in a cigarette. Nicotine may actually force some of those to be actually worse than they are, so that's a bad thing. Vascular changes. One of the number one causes of heart disease is tobacco, so that could be cardiovascular disease, it could be cerebral vascular disease, it could be pulmonary vascular disease or renal vascular disease, so that's brain, heart, kidneys, our blood vessels that can cause us to have problems down the road, such as heart attacks and strokes. It may contribute to other organ dysfunction, such as early kidney failure, depending on the situation there, erectile dysfunction, and other things that narrow and cause damage to our blood vessels. Maternal effects, low birth weight babies, it can cause the, what we call choradogenicity, which just means it can cause harm to the fetus as the fetus is growing and cause not only mental, but maybe physical problems. And there's what we call epigenetic effects. We were cavemen once theoretically, and now we're where we're at, and we have all this technology. Epigeneticists feel that what happens is, is we have these little triggers in our body, and that after doing a behavior so long that we actually set genes in motion to create better and better and better behaviors, or maybe worse and worse behaviors. And so, that's how I think they think we evolve over time, is by changing them. So do we know if a mother smokes and a fetus is exposed to that tobacco and that nicotine, maybe when they come out, those epigenetic effects means that that child is destined to be a smoker, or to be an astronaut, or to be an NBA basketball player? We just don't know those things. The negative effects on the lungs, that's what I deal with all the time. There's volatile organic acids that we put in our lungs from the vapor, there's nicotine, there's ultrafine particles, which we don't know where they go or what they do, there's cancer-causing chemicals in there, heavy metals and other toxins, and then the flavoring. And I think I have it down here. Initially, when these first came out, one of the biggest problems we had was something called hypersensitivity pneumitis. And that's a big term for allergic lung disease. You inhale something in your lungs, your lungs develop allergic reaction to it, they get inflamed and give you like a non-bacterial, non-viral pneumonia, you're sick, be in the ICU. Diacetal was one of those chemicals. Diacetal is a well-known chemical in the pulmonary literature. It's popcorn butter flavor, and there's something called popcorn lung. The people in the popcorn factories, when they were around a lot of this diacetal and inhaling it, they ended up with hypersensitivity pneumitis and would be sick from it. So there's other chemicals in here like acetypropanol, 2, 3, pentadiol formaldehyde. That's what happens when I die, you put it into my blood vessels to preserve me. So you're putting that into your system when you vape or use a cigarette. And then there's potential herbicides, pesticides, and other things, depending on the situation. I'll talk a little bit about that. So, chronic bronchitis, which is a chronic daily cough, emphysema, lipoid pneumonia, hypersensitivity pneumitis, something called bronchiolitis obliterans, which is what we found in the diacetal as well, alveolar hemorrhage, which means bleeding from the lungs, an acute lung injury, which means a diffuse pneumonia of both lungs that makes it so you can't breathe, and then you end up in the San Francisco McInnes ICU for maybe days or weeks on a ventilator. Oh, here's a little dramatic effect. So these aren't necessarily real patients at Avera McKinnon. I just went to the internet, sniffed some photos of things that I've seen. But that is an X-ray of a normal, say, sixteen, eighteen-year-old boy right there on the right-hand side. And this picture on the left-hand side on the top is actually a picture of somebody with lipoid pneumonia or fatty pneumonia. You know, when I look at that X-ray, if I were seen in the ICU, I could say it's adult respiratory distress syndrome, phylle pneumonia, congestive heart failure, you name it, it can be all kinds of those things, but that's not a very good X-ray to have. And if you look at the bottom right, that's a normal CAT scan section of the lung with the heart sitting there in the middle. And those little spidery things that are coming out are actually the blood vessels that take blood to the lungs to get oxygen and then bring oxygen back to the heart so it can be pumped to the system for our brain and our kidneys and all those things. And on the other side, the left-hand side, that's what a lung looks like when it becomes horribly inflamed. So the little black areas you see there are actually the areas of lungs that are actually filled with oxygen. And the gray-white areas that you see are areas of lungs that are horribly inflamed. And when those areas are horribly inflamed, they don't get oxygen, then you can't breathe, and then you get into trouble, and then you might end up with pathology that looks like this. It's a little bit small, but on the top right-hand corner there, on my top right-hand It's a little bit small, but on the top right-hand corner there, on my top right-hand corner, I guess, is a normal lung with blood vessels and bronchioles. And then if you go down to the bottom, what you'll see there, that's the fine, wispy membranes of the lung. They're very delicate. They're zero-point-zero-three microns in size, which is very, very tiny. So it doesn't take much to damage them. And then what you look at is a bigger picture there on my top left, which is an area of somebody with some sort of inflammatory lung disease. Where all those air sacs get filled with debris and inflammation and fibrin and fluid and white blood cells. And down here on the bottom, what you see is you see a lot of white. That's actually fat that's deposited in the lungs. And that's what actually the FDA, CDC feel is actually going on with the vaping products right now. Is that somehow they're getting some sort of fat activation or fat inhalation in their lungs. Those fatty particles come in there, they don't allow air to go where they go. White blood cells that need to scavenge all this debris can't function, and then people get really, really sick. And then they end up in the ICU on the ventilator like this. Their family's around, they have IVs in places and tubes and catheters in places they wish they never had. And I can tell you, not necessarily from experience, but it's not very fun having a, a finger-sized breathing tube down the airway, um, to breathe. And that may be a small bump in the road because some people live and some people die. And that's what we're trying to prevent with death. The other effects of nicotine that we know, it's a gateway drug. So that risk-reward behavior that they have. So what happened is it was nicotine, now it's marijuana and alcohol. And then cocaine and amphetamines and so on and so on. And pretty soon, you're down the path of no return. And you're either dead on the street, or you're sick, or you're homeless, or you're in trouble. And so that's why we wanna prevent this at a young, early age, is to prevent you from going down that path with it. Now, some people may try cocaine once, nicotine once, alcohol once. Not for me. But there's plenty of us out there that have that risk-reward trigger in our brain that all it takes is once and then we're hooked. We also know that teens who use cigarettes are three times more likely to smoke tobacco later in life. We know that at nicotine itself is very highly addictive and hard to quit. I think I read something last week that said, "People who try to quit cold turkey, adults, have about a seven percent chance of quitting." That's not a very good chance of quitting smoking. And now you're giving them something that's maybe more potent, maybe easier to get access to. And, uh, we don't really know what that means for kids. Plus, just like we talked about the nineteenth century versus the twentieth century versus now, we don't know what this means for the twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-third centuries where you'll be at, uh, in life with your kids and grandchildren. This is what we know. So I looked again today, but there are eight-hundred-five-plus cases of illness or lung injury in forty-six US states and one US territory related to vaping-related lung injury. Three-fourths of those are male. Two-thirds are between the ages of eighteen and thirty-four. Sixteen percent of those are less than eighteen years old. And seventeen percent are greater than thirty-five. And it's a little hard to read, but there's at least six, if not more, cases in the state of South Dakota right now. And if you look at twelve deaths confirmed in ten states, this isn't New York and LA. This is Missouri and Iowa, Minnesota, that some of these deaths are at. So that's right at our backyard. So it could happen easily here in South Dakota as well. We're no different than any of those other states. Now, most of these have been associated with marijuana. However, many of these patients that were diagnosed with this, we're not only using marijuana, but we're also using other nicotine-related vaping devices. And there have been some cases of people getting sick with just nicotine alone. So there again, we don't know the answer to the problem, so we can't necessarily fix it. And so the best and most important advice I can give to any of you is don't start, don't do it. If you are, try to get some help. Well, some of the unknowns are, is it specifically a cigarette? Is it Juul? Is it dank bakes? Is it some of those? They're trying to nail that on the head by interviewing all these people that are surviving. So what did you use? When did you use it? Where did you get it? We don't know. Is it the device itself, the liquid? Is it the refill pods? Is it cartridges? Is it marijuana, which they think it might be? Is it the CBD oil? Is it nicotine alone? There was one study that, or case that thought maybe it was vitamin E acetate, which you would probably take in your multivitamin during the day that could be causing the problem. Is it one of the dil- dilients, like the diacetal that's in there for the flavoring? Um, or is it a contaminant? I did read an article, I think it was published in, uh, US World News Report or something like that, about a kid who had gotten really sick from this and spent about a week or ten days in the ICU. What they thought, or what they maybe figured out is, in states where marijuana is accessible, that you have to pay tax. You have to have a license. You have to do all these things in order to sell it. Well, that costs money. If you're on the street and you're growing a bunch of marijuana in your basement or tobacco, and you decide that you're gonna find a cheap way to get the nicotine or the tobacco out of there. You get that liquid, which is kind of a dangerous process. You take a Juul pod or somebody else's pod, and then you put that substance in there, and then you sell it. Not only are they selling it to the black market, but what I heard is about fifty percent of those are actually going to the black market. So the dealer on the street. And maybe fifty percent of those are actually being sold to the actual people that can sell it legally because they can get it cheaper. And what we don't know is, are there herbicides? Are there pesticides? Is this product sterile enough to be brought to the market that it's something that we should be putting in our lungs? We don't know that. So you never know necessarily when you pick this up, where you're getting it from, who you're getting it from, what it's mixed with, what it's made. Is it really nicotine, or is it something else that you're getting? You may just not know. Um, so electronic cigarettes and teen, I only brought some of this up. But they suspect at least in two thousand fourteen that there were about three million adolescents that have been, that have used a vaping device. Boys envy two times two girls, which goes along with the, it's just a while to mature. Uh, thirty percent of students that use an e-cigarette were more likely to smoke tobacco. And seven out of ten had exposed to an advertisement. Eighty percent of the students said there was no harm in using e-cigarette. And sixty-six percent thought it was just flavored vapor, which you can actually get. Again, there you don't know what you're putting in your system. And this was just, and I tried to, I meant to put down the citation, but there was just a publication that showed twenty percent of eighteen-to-twenty-year-olds, so what they call Generation Z, still believe vaping is harmless. And this is like within the last two weeks. And twenty-four percent of twenty-two-to-thirty-eight-year-olds that are millennials also believe that vaping is harmless. So having these discussions with me, with other people, reading the news, educating your friends, your family, it doesn't matter what age you are, this is probably one of the more important things you can do right now. Uh, tobacco cigarettes, about eight percent of high schoolers, uh, use them and about two percent of middle schoolers. As she said, this had a huge drop around two thousand fourteen, two thousand seventeen. But then even e-cigarettes started picking up, mainly because of, of marketing. And twenty to forty percent of high schoolers have used an e-cigarette and tobacco together. Meaning they might smoke when they're out with their friends, but when they're in school, they're using e-cigarette. And about seven to thirty percent of middle schoolers. That's seventh, eighth graders, sixth graders, and we know that there's even kids in elementary school that are using this. And e-cigarettes alone, twenty-one to twenty-five percent of high schoolers and five to ten percent of middle schoolers. And that really hasn't changed there lately, from what I can tell. So this is where part of this education comes. So what do you look for? Secretive attitudes. Something that's changed in your child. I'm not picking on you kids. I was a kid once too, and I'm still an adult, and we still make mistakes. And I bet if I asked your moms and dads and everybody in here if they've made mistakes, they will agree. So the key here is not pointing fingers, not blaming, but trying to educate parents on how to maybe get you help if you've done it, or if you know some of this done. Oral fixation. Do they start walking around with that sucker stick in their mouth? Do they always have a popsicle stick in there? Um, is there impulsivity in risk-taking? So is that risk-reward system being changed? Are there mood swings? Maybe when they're at home, they're too afraid to do it, so then they're having a little bit of nicotine withdrawal. Are there changes in their sleep patterns? Nicotine is a stimulant, so maybe they're staying up later and can't get up in the morning. Um, increased thirst. Those chemicals in there will dry out the mucous membranes of the mouth and the nose. It decreases saliva production, so food doesn't taste as good. So maybe appetite decreases and you start seeing unintentional weight loss. Decreased caffeine consumption. Caffeine and nicotine hit head-to-head and give you a better or bigger high. And so sometimes it makes you feel even worse. So they stop drinking their Mountain Dew or their Coke or their Pepsi or whatever their choice is of drinks. Nose bleeds because of the drying. Mouth sores because of the drying and the chemicals. Eye irritation from the vapor. Dizziness, nausea, headaches, all side effects of nicotine. Acne's been discussed. Blisters on the fingers from the chemical. Increased cough. So they have more colds, or you just see them coughing a little bit more than usual. Is there something irritating their airways? You walk in, there's an unexplained sense in the room. Or maybe the window's always open and now it's thirty-five below in South Dakota and you wonder what the heck is going on. Or are there signs of withdrawal, which we'll talk about. Withdrawal symptoms are irritability, anxiety, decreased concentration, decreased memory, increased appetite, and then potentially additional cravings. That's why smokers usually say, "Well, if I quit smoking, I'm gonna gain weight." For two reasons. Number one, the nicotine is no longer the stimulant. The food starts tasting better. And now you have to have something to put in your mouth so you pick up M&amp;M's or licorice or chocolate, are the things that I would do. So what to look for? Unfamiliar items, things that look like USB drives, uh, could be pods, different pieces of devices that you haven't seen. Speaking from, uh, reports, finding pens laying around that don't look like pens, maybe do a little bit of investigation. Spare parts such as metal wires, cotton balls, chargers that you've never seen that you don't think belonged anything around. And then juice containers, as you can see in the middle there. Uh, how can we prevent vaping and other addictive behaviors? Well, this is where this non-acusatory, let's be your friend type situation comes into play instead of being a parent. And I'm not always that great at this at home either. Um, my patients have been lost after sixteen years of having children. Look for educational opportunities. So my son Noah and I were just talking about some kids that just got suspended for being caught with marijuana. So he asked me about it. So I said, "Well, this is a good educational opportunity." So let's Google what happens when you get caught with marijuana. In the state of South Dakota, two ounces or less, if I remember correctly, is a misdemeanor. It's a speeding ticket. It's a thousand-dollar fine, could be up to a year in jail. More than two ounces of marijuana becomes a felony. A felony follows you wherever you go. Medical school, your jobs, your education, applying for a hunting license, those kinda things. Those you can't take away. And the more and more you have, the more and more trouble you get in, the more jail time that they're gonna find. So educational opportunities to say, "Yeah, it might be fun for a minute, and maybe you get suspended from a football game or from school for a couple days." That's a slap on the hand. But when you go to apply to, uh, get a job with the FBI, or you wanna work for the government, or you wanna be a teacher, that's the first thing they're gonna ask you. Do you have a felony on your record? Do you really wanna carry that with you? Um, listen, I'm doing a lot of talking right now, and I'm not a very good listener, because number one, I'm a man. And number two, I'm just not a very good listener. But listen to your kids. Let them speak. Let them reach out to you. And then don't lecture. Make it an educational opportunity. You have given tape. You'll get further with that. And this isn't my suggestions. This is actually from the CDC. Self-expectations, or set expectations, it's illegal. You're not twenty-one years old. You're not eighteen years old. You shouldn't do those things until you are. And the reason why we set those isn't because we don't want you to have fun like your mom and dad, or maybe you go hang out at a house party with friends and have a few beers. It's one of those situations that you're too young and that's gonna cause you harm at this age. And you're really not that responsible yet to have that ability to make those decisions because it can cause you harm because of that lack of risk-reward check balances you have. Remind them that it's really hard to quit. Sometimes when you start these things, no matter how much low power you have, it's just very difficult. And also the gateway drug issue. What started off as nicotine now becomes marijuana, becomes amphetamines and cocaine, alcohol, and you're in trouble. Have others that you trust. Grandma, grandpa, best friend across the street. Maybe a mentor that's in college that the kid grew up with. Have them educate them. As adults, this is probably one of the harder things we have to do, is set those healthy behaviors. Um, be a modeling experience through your kids. Sometimes I think we take that for granted, that they just say, "Oh, well, we're adults, so we can do what we wanna do." We're really setting those healthy behaviors. And then teach the risks and lack of benefits, and also we've used those skills. This is where I reached out to my sixteen-year-old daughter and now my thirteen-year-old son and said, "If you were ever at a party, if you were ever in an environment where you feel it's uncomfortable, you just text me something." It could be gibberish. I will know that there's a, there's a problem. That means I will text you or I will call you. And I will lie, and I may go to hell for lying, but I will say, "Hey, grandma's died," or "Grandma's in the hospital," or whatever I need to do. And I will come get you out of that environment. My father always said, "If you get into trouble, I will come get you." And I will promise to try not to lecture you when that happens. But if you go to jail, you will sit there for at least twenty-four hours, and then I will come get you. Why? Because he wanted me to have those expectations. He wanted me to have those experiences. He wanted to know that there are consequences to my actions. I'm sure that first twenty-four hours might be okay, but I always knew that if something was happening, it was gonna happen later, after he had time to calm down and maybe I had the time to realize what I was doing. So reiterate your expectations to your children and your rules. If you have a child that is already doing this, or you find out a friend is doing this, seek help. That could be your school counselors, your school nurses, could be your teachers, could be your administrators, could be your family practice doctor, your nurse practitioner, your PA. Ask questions, seek help, give the appropriate counseling. Seek physician assistance. There are addiction specialists out there that can help with this. And the reason why that's very important is there is no FDA evidence that anything that we do in adults is helpful in this. Studies that look at Zyban or Lelobutrin, which is an antidepressant, have shown that it may or may not be beneficial in kids. And we don't really know what that means for long-term harm. Nicotine replacement therapies, such as the patches and the gums and those kinda things, may be helpful. There again, you're substituting one form of nicotine for another. And then we know like the chantics that you hear advertised. The risks that I talk to my patients about with chantics is suicidal ideation and bad dreams. So why would I wanna give that to my children? So we just don't have enough tools. We don't have enough evidence. We don't have enough study to deal with this in kids. And we're talking about smoking that we've known about being an epidemic in kids for a very long time. And now we're giving them theoretically easier access to stuff that they can hide from us. And actually, we maybe take more of it in, and we become more addicted. What message can we give to our children again? Don't start. This is the same for adults. If you haven't done vape, don't do a vape. If you're smoking cigarettes, try to figure out a way to quit. It's cool now, but, uh, there are always consequences. Um, it's the whole "Watch me do this" mentality, and then you find out that maybe you broke your wrist or your neck. Uh, don't let peer pressure pressure you. Be yourself. Um, find that group of kids that you belong with. And I'll tell you a little story about myself. So Nancy Reagan, uh, this is probably in the late eighties, um, had a "Don't Do Drugs" campaign. My class in Gettysburg High School actually, um, was supposed to be the first class of nineteen ninety to be drug and alcohol-free. I'm assuming that there's maybe a handful of us that made it. But of the handful that made it, two of them are my best friends. And neither one of us had a sip of alcohol-free drink in the morning. And so it was always that, "Hey, I got your back. You got my back." It was actually kinda nice, all the peer pressure that we've got and the way we were able to fend it off. It was almost like we were superheroes from the standpoint that they would offer us a beer, we just said, "No." We were there together. We were a team. And, uh, that worked out very well. And then if you have troubles, please ask for help. It's the whole, whole, uh, uh, situation, you should ask help and forgiveness before you get into trouble. And, uh, that I think is probably what your administrators at your school are going to tell you is, "Come in and say, 'Hey, I made a mistake. I need some help with this.'" Better than, "Hey, I got caught with two ounces of marijuana and now I'm in handcuffs, or I got caught with an e-cigarette and I'm suspended for school and I missed my finals." So make sure that you, uh, you reach out to those that you can. Uh, here are the CDC recommendations, and this is the last couple slides, so sorry for taking so much time. But everybody should refrain from using e-cigarettes and vaping devices. Massachusetts and New York are the first ones to try to get on the books to completely ban e-cigarettes. San Francisco, I think, is the first city to ever do that. And I have a feeling if the CDC doesn't step in, there are gonna be other states that'll follow suit. If you recently vaped, or you have symptoms that may be consistent with something that doesn't feel good, seek medical help. Because the earlier you get help, the better you'll be, the less time you spend in the ICU and the ventilator, and the less chance you'll have of dying. Do not buy the marijuana or CBD oil products. And do not buy, this is for adults, because kids theoretically can't. But if, you shouldn't buy from anybody that you don't trust because you have no clue what they're putting in there. Uh, do not modify these products. They think that that could be a contributing factor. Do not use additional substances to the liquid. So some people were adding their own flavors or their own drugs. And no use is absolutely recommended in youth or young adults, uh, and pregnant women and those if you currently have... And no use is absolutely recommended in youth or young adults, uh, and pregnant women, and those if you currently haven't been smoking, you shouldn't pick up a, uh, e-cigarette, and that just means just don't do it at all. So, uh, if you know my kids, which most of you don't, probably none of you don't, but I'm a smart aleck, and so I had a lot of these bad dad jokes, and they just ate them, and I get the booze all the time. But I came up with a couple bad dad quotes, because I love basketball, and John Wooden was a great coach at UCLA. Be more concerned about your character than your reputation, because your character is who you really are, and your reputation is what everybody else thinks about you. We look at that a lot different, even as adults, we wanna be, our, our reputation is very important, but character will get you a lot further than reputation. And a mistake is valuable if you do four things. Recognize that you've made the mistake. Admit that you made the mistake. Learn from your mistake, and forget about it. And the last one is don't repeat it. Because I always tell my son Noah, who's a boy, who has that lack of thought process where the frontal part of the brain is in trouble, and I just said, if you make the mistake once, that's okay. You should learn from that. If you make it twice, I'm just gonna call you a student. Either I do. My point is, is you gotta think, if you, if you learn from that mistake, if you grow from that mistake, it'll take you a lot further in life, and it'll actually teach you some good, um, um, adult skills. So, thank you, and I'd be happy to take any questions, uh, to anybody.
Thank you, Doctor. We appreciate that. We're gonna offer a time. We will have a, a time here at the end to ask questions, so I'm gonna bring up our next speaker right now, and we have Dan Conrad here. Uh, Mr. Conrad is currently the principal at Washington High School, uh, and he is in his twenty-second year with our school district. Uh, the first eleven years, he was a teacher at Lincoln High School, teaching math and science, and for the last eleven years has been an administrator at Washington High School. So, well, welcome, Dan, up here.
Thank you, Molly. Uh, don't have the wireless mic, don't have a slideshow, but I'll, a couple things that we're seeing at high schools. So I think starting it out, we gotta get to know somebody a little bit. Um, I always tell my kids, Washington is the most diverse city or diverse school in the city. I'm about as vanilla as it comes. I've never left Sioux Falls, Laura Wilder Edison, downtown Washington, Roosevelt, first class, out of there to graduate. Some of you might have that chance at Thomas Jefferson here in the next couple of years. So I say that because I'm a lifelong Sioux Falls community citizen. And I've seen it change, I've seen it come and go. And so when I left Roosevelt twenty-seven years ago, I didn't vision I'd be here, but my path might be different, had to make different choices. And so what we're seeing from kids, so I've got three talking points, a little bit about what we're seeing in the high schools. What impact does it have for you as a student? And then what are students saying about it when we talk to them? Um, earlier it was said correctly, we would much rather catch you doing good things and supporting you, finding resources. Come let us know whether it's your principal in your building. While I speak for Washington, I know Mr. Hazlitt, I know Dr. Rader, we're not that far apart, or, or Ms. Elwin, um, we're willing to help you out. We wanna provide you support, whether that's a teacher, a counselor, an administrator, we wanna provide access. We have great access to resources, so we wanna provide support. We do have the other side, where we have to hold you accountable along the way. Uh, so we see a variety of things going on in the high school. Uh, just recently, pulling up the data, in two thousand sixteen seventeen at Washington High School, we had twenty-five officer referrals for tobacco-related. Whether that's tobacco or these jewel sticks that are coming out. So they're small, you can hide it, you couldn't see it, I could puff it, you'd never know. I can walk down the hallway, I can be in the bathroom. Five-minute passing periods, I can do a lot in the bathroom stall, take a, head back out. And the part is, is usually when you smoke a cigarette, you kinda know how much you had. You can do this all day long and not know how much you had. Uh, so things that we're seeing, twenty-five tobacco-related in sixteen seventeen at Washington. Last year alone, we had eighty-one. And we don't catch everybody. And those eighty-one don't include the things that we find when we're course of investigation of something else. Whether it's, um, sharing information, I'm saying some things I shouldn't say, or, um, there's a suspicion that you may have been smoking something else in the parking lot, or something else. Um, we'll find these, so when it was said that it's a gateway, yeah. Because we don't usually just find the marijuana at school, we find a pack of these, or just one stick, but when we find a pack of, are these tips all over the floors of cars. We find them in the, in the cup holders, we find them in our parking lot, we find them in the classroom, just a little tip. We don't know whose bag it fell out of, but a teacher will bring it in and say, hey, Dan, I found this in my fifth-period class. Okay, well, any idea whose it might be? Well, no, it's tough to track down. So it's pretty common that they're falling out of bags, or the stick itself might fall out. Uh, but you see it a lot of different places. Uh, when we talk to kids and ask them, okay, take me through this, why are you doing it? We got other things we can do. It helps me settle down, it helps me feel relaxed. So we hear kids saying that they have an elevated anxiety, and so this helps them stay calm. Or maybe it's their ability to focus in class, they're using this to use it as their focus mechanism. Uh, but we also know that when you start supplementing your natural ability to cope with chemicals, your natural ability to cope is no longer adequate. And so we see a reduced ability to cope with just simple things. Coming to school on time, getting up in the morning, putting the video game down. Uh, we, we see those things impacting the school day, uh, when it comes to learning in pieces. You know, so school rules, what are the school rules? If, if you're possessing vape pen, vape cartridge, I would even extend it to vape charger, looks like a little USB device. When you lock it in together, you can plug it into a computer, it looks like it's a antenna for your network, right? So any one of those is gonna get you an out-of-school suspension for a day. It's gonna get you an activity violation if you're involved in any activities or events. An activity violation first time, it's fourteen consecutive school days and two events, whichever's greater. Um, or as long as it does not exceed twenty-five percent of the season. We know our soccer season and our fall sports are pretty condensed. Uh, those guys, their season's over before the school year starts for the most part, at least a third of it. A lot happens, right? So you guys lose that opportunity to compete and play, and you only get one chance to do that. And, uh, we tell our students at Washington, we want them to do two things, graduate in four years, rigorous course of study, and we want you to get involved. This takes away your opportunity to get involved. School has to be fun. Uh, we want it to be a good time for you. I remember a lot of my high school days, we want it to be enjoyable, we want it to be fun. So there's a suspension for the first offense, that suspension only gets longer when it happens more often. Uh, you lose opportunity to compete, whether that's JROTC and presenting the color guard, whether that's National Honor Society. It may prevent you from being in National Honor Society that first year, because there's a citizenship and community piece in that. So those are things that you may not realize that it does impact. Uh, Mr. Seber, our counselor's gonna, you get, you get caught with drugs, if you get caught with that felony for marijuana, it limits your ability to access financial aid for colleges. So there is a big impact out there, to name a few things. So the last thing, as I come around, is what's the demographic of students? There isn't one. It's all of our kids. We have nineteen hundred kids roughly at Washington, it could be any one of the nineteen hundred. From your sports star to your, uh, student who is your highest academic achiever, the student who's at risk, there isn't one, it's anybody, it's everybody. Why do you do it? Ah, I kinda like the taste of it. There's many flavors. It helps me focus, it takes away my anxiety. Um, but what happens is you see it in a lot of different places in school. And when we're walking down, it used to be you walk in the bathroom, geez, somebody smoked a cigarette, I could smell that, right? Can't smell this. You just don't pick it up. You might see a plume come out, if you catch it at the right time, come out of the top of the stall, and you're like, oh, that was obvious. But other than that, you don't see it, and you don't smell it. Um, and so it's, when I say we went from twenty-five in two thousand sixteen seventeen to eighty-one in eighteen nineteen, sometimes we just get lucky, right? Uh, we're not that good at catching, we're pretty good, but we're not that good. So the point, or I guess my last speaking topic of tonight is engage in the conversation. There are kids, we've, we've gotta talk to them, have that conversation, see what it's like. We'll leave these up here tonight, you guys can see, you can take it apart, you can see the pieces of a jewel stick. There's many different, um, ones, some have some nice color pattern to them. Silver, ironically, this seems to be the most popular, uh, the one that we caught the, or found the most. Uh, and then we've also found the jewel pack that it comes in, it comes in a pack of four. And each one of those is a pack of cigarettes roughly, I think I had heard earlier, five percent nicotine. And, and you'll see these just, you'll see them in your kids' cars, just ask questions. Again, we have way more choice when we're proactive and on the front side. We have less choice when we have to react to something. When we have to react, we have policies, we have protocols, we have rules in place to respond. We'd much rather be proactive, so we can have a different choice and have a different conversation. So that's in a nutshell, uh, my piece is, the one thing I did wanna show you, if you think it's just happening in the big cities, we did find a bottle about a year ago, a fluid. Is that homemade vape juice? Could be. You just don't know what you're gonna find. Uh, we found that, and we found a bunch of other containers as well. So it, it all, it's out there, but you gotta listen and you gotta have the conversation. And, and with that, I believe we can make a difference in what we're seeing. Um, because the young minds are very moldable. So with that, if you have questions later, be happy to answer them, but thanks for coming out tonight and, and showing an interest, we appreciate it. Have a good night.
All right, thank you, Mr. Conrad. Next up, we have Travis Sebers, he's a school counselor at Washington High School, and he's been a counselor for eighteen years, and he's been with us here at Washington for twelve. So welcome, Travis.
Thank you, uh, being in the world of counseling for almost two decades now, I've seen trends, and, uh, one thing I must say about teenagers that crosses generations is that desire to fit in has been around for as long as I've been in the profession, and for multi-generations, uh, in the past. What defines cool has changed. And one, one thing I wanted to share about the observations, and especially this topic of, of vaping, is how socially acceptable this is. And to me, we've heard the word peer pressure often tonight. This is a different type of peer pressure. Uh, we often think that peer pressure is maybe a couple friends singling you out, saying, come on, do this, try this. I do believe that exists, but to me vaping has the look of cool. Much like the, um, uh, back in the fifties, the cigarettes rolled up in a white t-shirt was the look of cool back then. But now the look of cool, it's vaping is almost like a fashion accessory that I've observed the last few years of, of working with this phenomenon at Washington. Um, much like the shoes you have to have, those checkered van shoes or that, that jacket that you have to have that has that name brand. Um, now it's hydro flask bottles is the big thing. I never thought that a water bottle would be cool, but that's the thing now. And when I say we have that desire to fit in, in a school with nineteen hundred kids, and it, even in middle schools and elementary schools, students are looking at other social groups. And as a counselor, you're saying, okay, who am I and who do I want to be like? And that's where vaping comes into that equation, and I don't think that we're educated on the topic, and I think that's really scary, what Mr. Conrad showed about, uh, the, the black market, uh, uh, that, that right there, we don't know what that is. And sometimes in a peer pressure situation, kids are caught, and, and it's very easy to go with the norm. Um, like Mr. Conrad said, this crosses all social groups, and as I said, it has that look of cool. Um, for some reason, we saw the, the, the data up there about males, I believe it was two to one. My personal experience working with students, um, it is both male and female, but the addictive nature has been females. The last four students that I've worked with on this started out recreational use, and the conversation I have as a counselor is, is this something that you just have once in a while, or is this something you have to have? And we've crossed that addictive, of addictive line right here, and that concerns me. Other thing I wanted to mention is, uh, the ease of access of, of obtaining this has changed. Um, Amazon, students are getting this off of Amazon. Uh, they're getting the pens off of Amazon. So parents do monitor online spending. Um, I'm surprised at how many teenagers have debit accounts and, and have the ability to order things online. Um, and the box will show up at your house, very concealed from, uh, uh, JB Five Industries, or something very, very discreet. Um, so be monitoring that, that's, I, I asked students, showed me their vape pen, I was like, where did you get that? Oh, you can get the really cool ones on Amazon. So I searched Amazon a while back, and for vape juice, I was very concerned and surprised that the, the keyword search when you, when you, um, when my results came up, aromatherapy, and, you know, it just had this, this description that this is good for you, there's, there's nothing wrong with this. And especially the, you know, take a tropical sensation vacation with, uh, tropical mango. And then it was ma, said aromatherapy and a bunch of keywords on there, and it's like, oh, this is vape juice. So I think Madison Avenue Marketing One-on-One, they are hitting the nail on the head right now in reaching teenagers. So that concerns me, and that's something I've been seeing. As a counselor, our door is open for confidential help. Um, as a counselor, and how confidentiality is bound, unless you are a harm to yourself or others, that stays between us. So students are very, very cautious about giving information, because they feel that we will contact parents or school administration, that there's gonna be recourse. And, um, we've had some very, uh, very productive conversations about this, because counselors, we're learning as we go as well. This is so new to us, it's so new to our society, that we wanna educate ourselves on this. I guess in closing, my, I, it's great to see students here, this is really good. And I hear this a lot from, from students, Mr. Seber, everybody does this, it's no big deal. Everybody does it. Well, the data has been shown in three different parts tonight, that thirty percent is doing that, is that, that's a pretty large number. However, tomorrow, when you guys go to first period, let's just say there's thirty students in that class, twenty are not doing it, ten are. Okay, so there, the, the kids that are not doing this does outweigh the kids that are doing it. But I know that illusion of cool and who is doing this makes it seem a lot more magnified as who is doing that. In a school of nineteen hundred students, I like to tell kids all the time, we have about thirteen hundred that don't do this. No, we don't. Well, that's thirty percent, so. So thanks for, for putting this together, having this conversation, um, and I appreciate it.
All right, so last on our speaker list tonight is Patty Anderson. Patty's one of our school nurses, she's been with us for seventeen years, and been at Roosevelt for the last three. Prior to that, she was at Memorial Middle School, so she's well-versed in teens, um, and teen health, so we'll invite Patty up.
Thank you, guys, for coming, it really is good to, to reiterate, we're seeing the kids and the parents. Um, I do wanna say that not only do I work with the kids, and I've always been a Peds, Peds ICU nurse for the most part, but I also have kids of my own. I have a son in high school at Washington, he's a senior, and I have two children in college. And in visiting with those children, I, they are pretty honest and open with you, and I was just having this conversation with my daughter and her friends, and, um, the comment was that some of the kids that are vaping are addicted, and they say, I can't stop. It, they're more addicted to the vaping than they were to cigarettes. And to me, that is scary, and I know they touched on that tonight, in the fact that it is highly, highly addictive. And it, these young adults and young kids that are starting it thought it was safer, and it was a safer alternative, and that's how it was marketed to them, unfortunately. Um, so, but they maybe tried it thinking it was a safe alternative, it made them feel better, it made them feel less anxious. I'm seeing students coming now that started it to feel less anxious, but now they're feeling more anxious. Part of it is the, um, releases in the media now, and they're coming, and they're scared. They're scared what it has done to their lungs, or they're scared because they're having some of those side effects, and we're directing them to get the help that they need. So that in of itself is quite concerning, and even just conversations, I catch myself when a child comes in and they're having a chronic cough, or they're having breathing issues, or just questions in general, that I'm asking them, have you been vaping? And I'm getting more of them that are honest, yeah, I have vaped. Um, so we'll, we'll talk through that. And we kind of have that policy too, if it's something where we're building a relationship, unless they're at a harm to themselves, or that we will get their permission to talk with their parents and get them the help that they need. We just ask too to be aware, um, I just had a in-service with this teachers and said to be more aware, because they are, they can easily vape, it's very concealable. They can, kids admit they do it right in the classroom, they just blow it into their hoodie of their sweatshirt, they can seal it up a sleeve, and they can vape, and you- and they can vape and you won't even smell it. And with marijuana, we could smell it when they smoked marijuana, but when they vape marijuana, we can't smell it either. So that is quite concerning. We're partners with you. We would be happy to help in any way that we can, and we would like you to help us too. So if there's things that you can do as parents, or you have questions, I tell parents, "My door is open, please give me a call. I'd be happy to help you in any way." And together partnering with that, and the kids helping them, I think we can make a difference. So thank you.
Thank you, you guys. We really appreciate all of your time and expertise in speaking with us tonight. I think at this point, we'd just like to offer an opportunity for all of you guys to ask some questions. We've had a wide variety of information provided to us, from the medical side down to the counseling in the cla, or, and in the school, the, you know, everything that can happen if you get caught doing it. So we've had a lot of information come at us tonight, but we want to open it up now for you guys to ask some, any questions you might have. And Diane's going to come around with a microphone if you do have a question. Go ahead and just raise your hand. Oh, I think there was something right there. We don't use this microphone to embarrass anyone or anything like that, but we do, we are live-streaming this, and we'll be playing it back on K-Learn TV. So we just want to make sure that as you're asking the question, we can all learn from that question and its answers. Okay, did somebody over here have a? Yes.
First of all, thank you for being here and sharing all this good information. I would just like to know more about what's being done to educate the kids. You know, we can all take this information home and talk to our children. I don't know if anybody else feels the same way. I do, but my teenagers don't listen to me very well. So, I'd like to understand what we're do, what we're offering in the schools specifically to better educate kids on the gravity of the situation.
I can talk about, I did mention this earlier this evening, that we, it happened to be in the health curriculum review year this year, and so that's already a discussion that we've started to talk about, because that gets discussed about every eight years, I believe. And vaping wasn't around at that time. And so now, that's a big part of our discussion, and making sure that that's going to be part of, you know, the health curriculum that we have going forward. But I will let these gentlemen maybe speak to how the message is getting out in schools right now.
Yeah, we're, we're fortunate that the South Dakota Department of Health has some resources available. So over the summer, Washington has partnered with them. We're, we're doing a poster and awareness campaign. We're hanging these in bathrooms, as that's the most common place that, that this is happening. And, you know, there's some pretty telling graphics on those, but we've at least started that we have, I believe, 85 posters that will be throughout the school. We're also having conversations with a, a partner, Southeastern Behavioral Health, on, on having somewhat of a educational series on a variety of topics that involve mental health, teen issues, and this is certainly one of those. We want to be very aware that it's, it's a conversation and not a lecture, because that can send kids running the other way.
Any other questions, anyone had?
Dell Rapids is installing sensors in the bathrooms. Do you think Sioux Falls would be next to follow?
We have looked into those, and we're familiar with the fact that they had installed those. Right now, we're really looking at the educational approach, because we've talked about how easily it can be concealed. You know, you could put them in a bathroom, and the, the fear, the thought is that then it just pushes them to do it in another part of the building, that it wouldn't necessarily deter use. And what we really want to do is make sure that students and families are aware of the negative effects and the health effects, and prevent it from happening, not just in the bathroom, but period. So, we'll continue to monitor that definitely, and know that it's an option out there. But right now, we're going to continue on the educational pathway.
Any other questions?
Hi. My name is Tyler Burvis. I'm the father of two from the Rapid City Area Schools District, and I'm the president of the Dakota Vaping Association. The, the DVA is a trade association of local business owners and other supporters that are committed to saving the 480,000 lives lost due to smoking-related illnesses each year in the United States, has been stated. We, we promote the responsible adult use of electronic nicotine delivery systems through public education, community building, legislative advocacy, and membership support. All of our member stores ID everyone at the door. And, and we supported the inclusion of the language in South Dakota codified law to, to, to keep it being, making it illegal to sell to minors. My question is this, what, what else can we as a state association do to help parents and schools prevent our South Dakota youth from obtaining electronic nicotine delivery systems? And, and are there any questions we can answer to the parents and school officials regarding this technology?
Thank you. So, obviously, respect that you're here and, and the business that you, that you hold. And, you know, really, tonight, our message is for kids. And I'm grateful to hear that you're in support of them not coming into the business and purchasing those items, and, and that's obviously what we are looking for too. I think Travis talked about some of the different ways that kids are obtaining them, either, you know, through friends or online and things like that. And so, I don't know that I'm the expert on how to prevent those types of things happening. Working through legislation and with law enforcement to prevent those kind of things is a good step. But, you know, our focus right now is on children and making sure, you know, like you said, that it doesn't get into their hands. And, and I don't think that there is an insinuation that, that they're coming into legitimate businesses and getting that. It, it is just concerning that they're getting that. And I don't know that anybody else has any questions or any other comments on that?
I don't know what I have to do, but there's a lot of things that are both appropriate and things that are not. And this purpose this night is about feelings. And at the end of the day, it's an illegal possession. It's illegal that you can't have it on school grounds, you can't have it there. And part of this is awareness, because it does contribute to other addictive behaviors that are around. And so part of this is culpability.
That's one of the things that I try to educate my children on as well, is the things that I do, I suffer the consequences of in my current adult life and later in my adult life. But we, as parents, have the responsibility to quote-unquote "get them to heaven." And, and what we teach them now, and the path that we set them down now, will hopefully set them in that right direction. The, the problem is, whether it's tobacco, which is a health crisis, whether it's nicotine, which is actually an epidemic right now, whether it's alcohol, whether it's the methamphetamine problem in Sioux Falls, they're all problems, and they're all adult problems. The big issue we really have to deal with is, if we were to start now with our kids, setting them in the right direction, and make sure every one of them did what was the right choice, which we'll never do, then we wouldn't have these problems, per se. We'll still have people that make mistakes, we'll still have people that drink and drive, we'll, we'll still have all of those things, but that's the tough question. All I can really speak at from my medical perspective is, right now, is the FDA, CDC are looking at this and saying that there are case reports, case series, studies that may show that nicotine replacement in the setting of a vape pen may be an appropriate solution to a 480,000 death-a-year problem. It doesn't fix the problem, per se, because nicotine itself is a chemical that can cause harm. The problem that we really have to deal with right now is there's, it's become something that's so easy to hide and use, that kids can use it so readily, number one. And number two, as responsible as you are, as responsible as I am, as much as I educate my kids, that doesn't prevent them from going to the friend down the street who has a friend who's 21-years-old, who can go into the bar, go into the liquor store, go into the vape shop, pick up these pens, bring them back, and then you be the distributor and dealer at school or at the party, or those kind of things. And I think the health crisis that we're dealing with right now isn't necessarily nicotine and vape pens. It's the 10 or 12 or more deaths that are occurring because of the devices that are being used, because of the stuff that's being put in them. And all it's really going to take is an epidemic of kids dying, and then we're going to have a big problem. So I think getting ahead of this in some respects, to make sure that we educate, that we prevent, that we help those that are already there, I think that's the biggest and most important message I can get across. I don't care whether my friend across the street has six beers on a Saturday night because he has an adult decision-making capacity, and maybe that's right or that's wrong. I do care if he gets behind the wheel, and that's my, my ability to protect him from hopefully doing that, and his from protecting me from doing it. And I think we have to take that a step further with our kids, because they don't have that adult decision-making capacity right now, and they may not have it for a long time.
Thank you. Were there any other questions? Yep.
That, he just touched on how their frontal lobe is not developed yet, and it doesn't until they're 24 or 25. And then we're taking this chemical and putting in their brain, and it's slowing the brain development. So they're going to have lifelong effects on that brain, and it's going to hinder or retard the growth of that brain. So to me, those two things together are scary. Number one, their brain isn't developed enough to make those informed decisions. And number two, they're taking in a chemical that's going to hinder their brain from reaching its full potential. And I, as a mom, I push my kids, because I want them to reach their full potential. That's, those are the two things together that really scare me.
Questions?
Well, I want to think, again, thank all of our presenters this evening. We're grateful for their expertise on this topic. And as I mentioned earlier, our hope tonight is that this will open the door for further discussion, further discussion between students and parents, students and school staff, and then also students with other students. So, we would want to encourage you to reach out with any questions you have, go back, go have more conversations on this. And, and we want to thank you for your partnership in helping take care of your students. Have a wonderful evening and be well.